So. All right. Call this meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. It get, get a little warm.
I'd say it's warm.
It did get a little warm.
Now you did that.
Yeah, no, I'll take it off. Okay. Council, we have roll call. Think we're waiting on one? Okay, there we go. All right. Okay. Ms. Martinez?
All councilors present, an aquorum has been declared.
Thank you very much. Up next, we have Agenda Approval. Counselor V. Hill?
Mayor, I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, please start voting. Ms. Martinez?
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay. Up next, we have Citizen Comments. This is the segment of the agenda to where we ask anyone who are in the audience to come up and make comments if you've turned in a comment card. We do ask that you keep your comments to within three minutes. If you're still talking at that point, I would politely ask you to stop talking at that time. I don't have any comment cards. Ms. Martinez turning today?
I do not have any either, Mayor.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and go to the Zoom. If you can give them instructions, Ms. Martinez, of how to raise their hands so that we can recognize them to give them opportunity to make comments during this portion of the agenda?
Sure. If you're on the Zoom app and you want to speak, you'll use raise hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're on a telephone, you'll dial star nine. I don't see anyone raising their hand, Mayor.
Okay, I don't see any hands raised either, so we'll go ahead and close this segment of the on the agenda and we'll move on to the next item, which is ceremonial items, introduction of a new police officer.
Good evening, Council. Good evening, Mayor. I'm here tonight to introduce our newest police officer, Miko Sanchez. Miko's homegrown, born and raised in the valley, graduated from Centauri in two thousand and thirteen. After graduation, he decided to join the United States Navy. In two thousand and fourteen, he completed his basic training in Illinois, followed by multiple stations in San Antonio, Texas, to Washington State, and eventually finished up his career in Corpus Christi, Texas in two thousand and twenty-one. After getting out of the military, Miko decided he wanted to get back into law enforcement. He was torn between going back to Corpus Christi, where he finished his military career, or serving his hometown. And ultimately, we're here tonight because he chose to serve his hometown. Miko attended the local police academy in two thousand and twenty-two, which was nine months of schooling, followed by four months of training with our department. So although he graduated from Centauri, we are here, we are proud to announce Miko as Alamosa's newest officer.
Thank you, guys.
So, Miko, do you want to say a few words or anything before council say making?
Thank you.
All right, there was a few. There was a few. Okay, Counselor Hensley?
Miko, I just want to welcome you. It's awesome to have you as part of the group that really protects us and takes care of our city and the people in the city. And I just want to let you know, we really appreciate you.
Thank you.
Counselor Yan V. Hill?
Mayor, thank you. Miko, welcome to the team. And it's, it's always good to see our local police academy producing local police officers. So thank you.
Okay, Counselor Jackie V. Hill?
Just want to say welcome, and it's really nice to see somebody here from the valley. So welcome.
Miko, I'll just close things up and we, we are glad that you're a part of the team. You were a great group of officers and we appreciate everything that you're doing to serve our community. Wish you the best.
Can I ask one more question?
Sure, go ahead.
All right, so you obviously had Corpus Christi and Alamosa. So when you were in Corpus Christi, what did you miss the most about Alamosa or the valley?
It was mostly that I was raised here. It's a lot slower pace. Definitely not the cold weather. But, and then just my family is still here, so.
Awesome. Well, welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Brings us to the, the next item on the agenda is Consent Calendar A.
Mayor, I move that we approve Consent Calendar A.
I second it.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, please start voting. Ms. Martinez?
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay. Brings us to the next item on the agenda. Regular business, Homeless Coalition Update.
Thank you, Mayor. We have three members with us, and Donna, if you can make sure the lights are on for those mics, that would be great. The Homeless Coalition remains a very active group that meets monthly, and they can introduce themselves and what category they're representing and provide the updates themselves. So Donna, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. And thanks again to Heather and the City Council for putting together these advisory councils. I feel like they're very important and they serve a really wonderful purpose, and I've been honored to serve. So just a quick overview of the history. The Homeless Coalition was created in two thousand and nineteen. The purpose was to understand housing instability and homelessness in our community through discussion and identification of causes, effects, potential solutions by development of strategic partnerships, collaborative responses, and engagement of community resources. So in a nutshell, why? And who's helping? And how do we work together? And the membership that's represented on this Homeless Coalition, as you know, as City Council, is that we ask someone from City, someone from the County Commissioner, veterans, La Puente, faith community, the Police Department, the S L V Housing Coalition, the Alamosa Housing Authority, the Alamosa County Sheriff's Office, someone with lived experience, an at-large member, Mental Health Services, Substance Youth Services, youth, health systems, business, and the Alamosa County Department of Human Services. And my name is Donna Weehy, and I work at San Luis Valley Health, and I'm the Public Relations and Marketing and Communications Director, and I represent the health systems. I couldn't do this without having Christina Daniel be one of the members who represented the city for a while, and she would always chime in and help us fill in the gaps with Valleywide and Behavioral Health. She has a wealth of information. After the twenty-two work, we, we had spent the first couple of years developing what we call a matrix. It's where we identified our services and our gaps. And the coalition then saw that City Council was focusing on housing solutions and programs like LEED, and then the creation of the Co-Responder Program. These were all programs and solutions that we had been discussing for these years together on, at these meetings. The coalition was excited to see that La Puente received a grant that allowed the growth of outreach efforts. What I didn't know, but what I learned is that La Puente took care of people that came to the shelter and came to them to use their services. And the homeless population started just to kind of grow and expand and seemed like the numbers were out there. And this is the unsheltered. This is the people who are not seeking the services. So at one point, La Puente finally got some grant money to hire someone, and you might remember Shanay, and now it's Brett. But they, Brett and Amanda, they go out and that's their job, is to bring services to the unsheltered. And they didn't have that position before. The coalition provided input on different council projects that Heather would bring towards us, such as the changes with St. Benedict's, the Airport Road Housing, construction of the new soup kitchen and emergency weather shelters. So we all felt like we had a chance to see what was going on and give input and kind of play devil's advocate before it went public. And so it was really great that we could participate in all that expansion of services. We also had developed a subcommittee that works with our community partners to prepare for extreme winter weather options in case La Puente would be full or would be inappropriate. And here we were working on that and thinking about it in two thousand and nineteen, and then during COVID, they restricted the amount of people that could be at La Puente. And the C D P H E were really hard on La Puente. And when they had outbreaks, it was like total lockdown and shutdown, and they could not serve the population. So we saw what happened when we had the September and October snowstorms of two thousand and twenty. Crazy, crazy times. City manager provided a presentation on the city's efforts. So Heather put together a slide presentation that talked about all these things beyond the Homeless Coalition, but just everything kind of to bring it together and made several community presentations that were very powerful and very impactful and really stopped people, started people thinking about it. I know Dawn saw it when she came to the hospital and gave that presentation and said, wow, we have to share this with more people. This is so interesting of what we've been doing. So now I'm going to turn it over to our youth representative, Sienna.
Hi, everyone. I'm Sienna Gallegos. I'm a student at Alamosa High School, and I serve as the youth representative for this coalition. So a significant portion of two thousand and twenty-three was spent on building a public information document that is ready to have aspects implemented. Major categories include general understanding of homelessness, understanding of homelessness in the valley, homeless youth, better understanding of La Puente's services, city efforts towards homelessness, the Homeless Coalition, St. Benedict's, emergency weather shelter, housing, affordable housing, airport road affordable housing, public safety, main misconceptions, barriers and gaps, and then how can I help? So this is just kind of for public education, so everyone's aware. Then I'll turn it over to Jen.
Hey, good evening, Jaron Parkins. I'm a pastor, Living Water Bible Fellowship. I started serving this coalition about three or four months ago, I think. It's all running together a little bit, but I'm learning a lot. I try to keep my mouth shut, not in asking questions, but it's, there's so much going on and so much to kind of take in. I, I just wanted to share a little bit why I got involved. Been in this community about twenty years and we used to be on Main Street, our church used to be on Main Street, and we'd have problems with homelessness. We'd have people sleeping in different places and had some interesting interactions with, with folks over the years. When we moved down to Clark Street, our current location, just south of the high school, the last several years, we've seen a big rise in a number of incidents, thefts, people sleeping around our facilities. But I've also noticed our congregation, in years past, our congregation was really involved in a lot of works in the community, I guess you'd say, like sending teams to La Puente to feed people, you know, to help serve the meals. We'd have all kinds of clothing drives, food drives. We have different benevolent activities in the community with some of the homelessness. But I, some of the issues, you know, some of the different things going on. But I guess in the last several years, I've noticed a real change in, partly in our congregation's attitude. There's been a real rise in, I think, anger and frustration and irritation at what's going on. In a lot of our congregation, we've got a real broad demographic of people in our church, from business owners, different people in the community that we have a lot of homeless people that have come to our services and participate in our services at times. It's been, it's, but it's been a real change. There used to be a real, I guess, I don't know what it says about our church or other churches in the valley, but there used to be a lot more sense of compassion and a lot more sense of wanting to help, believing that the homeless, the folks in our community that are struggling, that they are, you know, just really in need. I grew up, I grew up in a situation where I was homeless in, in different ways with my, with my, my mom was alcoholic and she struggled and we did a lot of couch surfing. We did a lot of, a lot of hotel stays, a lot of finding places to live. And I just know how hard it is to be that close to the edge and then, you know, find yourself, you know, out of, out of rent and out of rent money and entering places. So I understand the different things, but I think why I got involved, I, I, it seems like we're a lot, a lot of, a lot of good-hearted people are kind of getting to the edge of, of their, 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 their hope or the edge of their sense of compassion or wanting to make a difference. And I think for, for me, it was something that, you know, as a church representing Jesus Christ and the idea of loving and serving and, and helping people change their lives, it was important for me as a leader of a congregation to get involved in some way and see if there's a way that I can help. I wanted to serve with the city in some capacity for a long time, but to see if our congregation can't get involved in the, in the community to help. And honestly, at this point, I, I'm, I feel like Heather's doing a great job communicating, leading those meetings and just all the information that's out there. I, I'm kind of overwhelmed by all the different facets of the ways that the city is trying to help, the community is trying to help La Puente. It is something that I, I guess I come here after three or four meetings just to say that, that I'm hopeful. I guess you guys have faced it a lot longer than I have, and the things that you wrestle with and the challenges you face, different parts of the community. It's, it is such an intense and, and deeply involved issue. To try to fix it, you know, there's, yeah, I, I, I'm, I'm learning a lot. And so I can report back to my congregation and I can, I can tell them about what's happening in the community. I think I am excited about some of the, the things that I, I wasn't part of the coalition the last few years. It's put a lot of this stuff together, but I, I, I guess I'm, I'm seeing that there's going to be some fruit to this. And it's going to take, it's going to take the whole community to be engaged and do want to see changes made. I think what, what I've learned the most is, you know, from my experiences as a kid and what I've seen here and what I've seen over the years is the whole spectrum of homelessness. I think there's, there's a small spectrum right now, the, the drug culture, the drug and drink culture, the addiction, the mental illness, those kind of things put together, they get a lot of attention. And my heart is, you know, yeah, we need to address that, but we can't forget about the rest of the folks that are going through through issues that are, are struggling, that we can love them as a community and, and be a community for them. So I, I guess part of what we want to report is that there is a, some efforts going on and, and we had, we had Elizabeth Zern-Luhan at a recent meeting, and she did a really good job. She's, I guess, her part owner of Vinrock, I think it is, Vinrock Media. And so the current plan is to create some educational videos from my side of the aisle, so to speak, and the people I'm interacting with in my church and in the community. They are, I, I think a lack of information is really deadly to us as a community coming together to work on this. There's, there's so many misperceptions, not only about the homeless and, and what they're going through, but misperceptions about the role of the city, the role of, of the different departments. And there's, there's a lot of ideas of enablement or, or coddling homeless or, or different things that we're, we're just allowing these things to happen. And so I can, I, I'm, I'm learning and I, I can really see that there is a, some, some hope in the future, a strategy that can really help to a degree. There's people that are going to make choices, no matter what. There's going to be people that are, are going to walk down that path and they're, they're going to make some, some life choices that we, we can't change a lot of that, but certainly I think as a city, we can make a big difference in this, this realm. So I think these educational videos, I am excited about them to describe some of the, to, to the people that are just assuming that it's, it's a monolithic issue. It's a, it's a worn horse issue. I, I think these, these will really clarify some of the, the, the issues with homelessness, the housing issues, and the role of the city. I, I, I'm expect, I, I'm, I'm really interested to see how these are put together because the people that I know, they think the city's doing this or this, or the city's not doing this or this, and they're, they're just angry as, you know, their properties are getting violated or they're, they're feeling threatened by crime. But I, I can, I, I, I'm, I'm seeing a lot of good things happen here. So looking forward to that and just I want to encourage you guys, don't give up. Don't give up on, on your efforts to try to make Alamosa safe and, and, you know, attractive place, because it is. We've got a great community and we've got a bright future ahead. So please don't, don't give up.
Thank you, Jaron. Sienna Gallegos represents the youth, and she's been on this committee for several years. And she just recently did an interview with Chris Lopez, and it's on Facebook. So if you want to know more about Sienna, I asked her, what was the topic? And she said it was about me. So she got to talk about herself. So if you want to know more about Sienna, you could ask right now. I feel like I know most of you. Welcome, Jackie. It's really funny to sit there and look up here and not see Charlie. I just have to say. I've been in the community for over thirty years, and he's been on this City Council for the whole time, so. Do you have questions for us?
Yes, we do. Going to start off with Counselor Yan V. Hill?
Mayor, thank you. Donna and Sienna, it's great to see you. Thank you for being here. My comments, not so much questions, are for the pastor. Pastor, I've been up here for ten years, and that was some of the most inspiring words. I mean it. I'm not trying to blow smoke. That's some of the best stuff I've heard up here in ten years. I applaud you as a faith leader, hearing the, the disgruntlement of folks about homelessness and you being proactive to try to figure out what's really going on and how you can communicate that back to your, to your congregation. And that is going to help us so much. And I had a conversation with my mother-in-law a couple of weekends ago, and we talked about homelessness, and she's, lives in Denver and, and, and we talked, and she was talking with the pastor too, is a long time ago, homelessness was, again, a lot smaller in number across the country. But the groups who helped homelessness a long time ago, first and foremost, were faith groups and churches and that. So to get you back, to get, to get the faith group back in, in, into this and helping us out and communicating how it's such a multifaceted issue and, and you doing that, I am so thankful to you, sir, for doing this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Yan V. Hill. Counselor Krebs?
Thank you, Mayor. Just thank you for coming up and giving a informative, educational, well-rounded presentation. It's appreciated to hear not just all the rah rah, here's what we're doing, but here's the struggles that we're facing, and here's the obstacles that we see. It's, it's important to recognize the bad as well as the good. So thank you so much for being here tonight.
Thank you, Counselor Krebs. All right, I don't see any other lights on, so I'll wrap things up. I want to thank all three of you for being up here and saying, saying what you said today. It, it really means a lot. It's going to take the whole community to help us overcome the situation that we're dealing with. And it sounds like the coalition is trying to tap into all the different resources to make that happen. I'm really excited about the videos that you all are working on because I really do feel that the community is just not getting it. And, and, and we have to do a better job of helping them understand all of the different facets of what's going on. And I believe together, all of us will be able to find solutions that's going to help people who are at different phases of transitioning in, in housing. Okay. All righty. Thank you all so much and keep up the great work. Appreciate you. Okay, that brings us to the next item on the agenda. Second reading and public hearing for ordinance number twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-three. That's you, Ms. James.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. So this is amending the Unified Development Code to reduce multifamily parking requirements. We did have a work session on this information, and then we had our first reading. To be clear, this is only for new development, so, or a new multifamily housing complex that's being built, or if there's substantial changes where they would trigger our parking requirements in our land use code. And so this is just acknowledging that parking is expensive and it can harm affordable housing developments and that we did field research all throughout the spring and summer. And in lots of cases, most cases on average, we were parked one hundred and eighty-seven percent over demand. It doesn't mean there aren't outliers. There's a couple apartment complexes that are actually underparked both by our current land use standards and also by our last code standards. Still unclear how that happened for those particular complexes, but in general, we do require too much parking in our current code, and we have too much parking available in our apartment complexes. So we are asking for council to reduce the parking counts to one hundred and twenty-five percent of peak demand. And we're also asking to separate into three categories. So one is just the market rate housing, one is based on AMI and senior with mobility restrictions, and then also low-income senior. So we'll have three different categories based on the type of development you bring to our office. And then it will reduce overall the number of parking spaces required per development. This is just one of the many things that we've brought to council to amend so that we can be a more affordable, housing-friendly community and make sure that we're not being an impediment to development. And that's all I have.
So I'm going to open up the public hearing for the second reading of ordinance number twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-three, and ordinance amending the Unified Development Code to reduce multifamily parking ratios and to add parking requirement reductions. Okay, so if we have anyone in the audience who would like to make any comments at this time in regards to this public hearing, please feel free to come up to the podium. Okay, I don't see anyone in the audience that are trying to come up to the podium, so we'll go to Zoom. Ms. Martinez, and if you could give them an opportunity to raise their hand and we'll recognize them?
Yes, sir. If you're on the Zoom app and you want to speak for this ordinance, you'll use the Raise Your Hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're on a telephone, you'll dial star nine. Okay, Mayor, I don't see anyone raising their hand.
I don't see any hands raised either, so we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and turn it back over to council. Counselor Hensley?
Actually, I just have, so I know you said on the one apartment complex or whatever. So for future, since we're cutting it closer, there'll be some mechanism to make sure that they're doing the right amount to the new code.
This code, this, the write-up that you have in front of you actually tells you exactly how short that complex would be. So just by this new standards, they would need one hundred and eighty spaces, and they only have one hundred and thirty-five. So they're, they're very much underparked.
So I guess my, sorry, so I guess I knew that my question is, obviously somehow they got, it didn't happen. So I want to make sure there's a mechanism going forward that since we're going to be cutting it closer, is that that type of situation wouldn't happen again?
I can't speak to that because I don't know what happened. They didn't even seem to follow the old rules. So I don't know exactly why that happened.
Normally, we hold them to the codes. So this is a very odd situation. I, I don't know if during the development process, council allowed them to do something different. I, I'm, I'm not sure why they're not meeting what codes existed at that time.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Yan V. Hill?
Mayor, I move that we approve on second reading, ordinance number twenty-one dash two thousand and twenty-three.
I second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, please start voting. Ms. Martinez?
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you, council. That brings us to the next item on the agenda, public hearing and resolution, Resolution Number nineteen, two thousand and twenty-three, Second Budget Amendment for two thousand and twenty-three annual budget.
Thank you, Mayor. This is what we anticipate to be the last budget amendment for the two thousand and twenty-three budget. Some of these are, you know, kind of closing out, having more accurate numbers as it relates to grants. Some of it is knowing how much might carry over or not carry over. And then we've got some transferring in from the Capital Reserve. If we've had some capital items, either go a little bit over budget or unexpected, as in the case when we, when we as in the case when we when we have a a total police department vehicle, we get insurance proceeds and then we have an expense as well. So we've got revenue coming into the general fund, an increase of about five hundred and eighty-eight thousand. The biggest portion of that is the CDBG pass-through grant for the early childhood, some ARPA and other grant revenues, and then it it goes down from there again, most of its grants, or balancing out some of these line items at the end of the year. The enterprise fund, it looks like we are, the biggest thing that we're adding from a revenue perspective there is the grant for the back nine irrigations. They were able to get a significant chunk of that done this year. So that's about three hundred and forty and then we have some transfers in for some of the other water augmentation and water source and and those types of things. Community recreation, the sales tax, we need to adjust that for what we actually anticipate to bring in. So that's a positive adjustment from a revenue perspective. The street trust fund has a very similar increase in revenue to better align the sales tax projection for what we think we will collect based on what the budget was, as well as the enterprise debt service fund. And so those are the increases from a revenue perspective. From a expenditure perspective, most of them line up then with what those revenue items were. So there's some minor changes in court to change some of the line items to cover the part-time salary in the city clerks, another change to the line item to to cover the part-time salary. As you know, for twenty-two, twenty-four, we went ahead and created a line item for the part-time salary. And so we probably won't see the need to to move those things around again. The non-departmental is to match up with the revenue of the CDBG pass-through. IT received a grant to do some of the website remediation work. And so that's what that expense is and it lines up with the revenue. Our economic development, it's still somewhat to me a fairly new division. And so we're still getting a good handle on what annual costs are going to be. And so we needed to increase the line item as it relates to the meals for the Economic Development Committee meetings. From a police perspective, we have some radios that were needed to be purchased as well as some other equipment and afford F-one-fifty. And so again, there's some transfers from capital reserve to help pay for this and or insurance proceeds for support services, which is also police. It's aligning our co-responder grant and making sure the line items are fitting where the grant needs to hit, as well as the city's match and those types of things. We've got some cleanup from an unemployment expense, again, cleaning up some of the co-responder line items. We've got the homeless support for ARPA. So when council set up how they wanted to use ARPA, one of the items was they wanted to use it for the co-responder. But since our co-responder is a federal grant, we can't use ARPA. So then what we're doing instead then is the funding that we would have used to offset the general fund for the co-responder is we're putting it more towards some of the homeless support that we did out at St. Benedict's. So it's still helping the general fund in the same way, but from a expense that's eligible for ARPA. So that would be the fence that we put out there, the parking spot, some of those types of things that council had authorized. We do have expenses as it relates to dumb friends leagues. While there is some revenue from other counties that offset that based on the intergovernmental agreements that we have. Development Services is finalizing the ARPA that we were using for the housing plan implementation and the downtown plan parking lots. From a street perspective, we're recognizing the grant that we have for the rapid particular flashing beacons, something like that. The cemetery, we were over in our seasonals on cemetery, which will be tighter on that. But we needed to take some savings from operations to cover the personnel costs. And so you see some changes there from a budget amendment. And the same from parks is the seasonal Sally salary. We had to make some adjustments there as well. From an enterprise perspective, budget amendments, it's the asbestos removal at nine seventeen Eighth Street, purchase of the nine nineteen Eighth Street foreclosure auction, foreclosure auction. We've got some mineral impact grants where we thought we were going to be further along than we are, but because of supply chain issues and and things like that, we have to push it off to twenty-two, twenty-four. We haven't had as much traction on negotiating the storage leases, so that's being pushed off to twenty-two, twenty-four as well. And then Andy and his magic being able to get the back nine irrigation this year is is pretty tremendous. So making sure that that's hitting this year. The sewer, you could see the fifty-one thousand for the Princess Anne home repairs. Thankfully, the insurance company did find that that they will be covering it. So we will be getting reimbursed, but that is a risk that we had took to make sure that there's some immediate remediation going on. Capital improvements, we've got the purchase of PD radios. And cemetery, again, it's a transfer to try to help cover some of the seasonal salaries. Leanne is here as well as, oh, I've scrolled, there's a little bit more. Library is some grant expenditures, recreation is a vehicle replacement, golf course is starting a lease for the range picker. And we were able to go ahead and get a grant for the cattails carpet. So we moved that up in order to take advantage of the grant. And again, moving the water augmentation out to twenty-two, twenty-four. And with that, I actually am done. Leanne is here, as well as any department head of council has any detailed questions. I know I went pretty quickly.
Okay. Any comments or questions, councillor, council? No, looks like we're good. Okay, so we're going to go ahead and open up the public hearing for resolution number nineteen, twenty-two, twenty-three, second budget amendment for twenty-two, twenty-three annual budget. We have anyone in the audience who would like to come up and make any comments? Please feel free to come up to the podium and do so. Okay, we don't have anyone in the audience, so no one's coming up to the podium. So we'll go ahead and close this to Zoom and Ms. Mart- Ms. Martinez, if you don't mind.
If you want to speak right now, use the raise hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're on a telephone, you'll dial star nine. Doesn't look like anybody's choosing to raise their hand.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Martinez. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to council. Councillor V Hill.
Mayor, I move that we approve resolution number nineteen dash twenty-two, twenty-three.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, please start voting. Ms. Martinez.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, that brings us to the next item on the agenda, committed reports. Do we have anyone with any committed reports? No committed reports tonight, okay, good. That brings us to the next item on the agenda, staff announcements.
Okay, so Mayor, as we're, this is our last meeting for twenty-two, twenty-three. And I just, as we've been pulling information for the newsletter and other types of reports, there's just a number that I I really just need to celebrate staff and and everything that happened this this year. We've brought in over nineteen million dollars just this year. This isn't our cumulative number. So this is nineteen nineteen million, two hundred and eighty-three thousand, four hundred and ninety-four dollars. And that's a lot of grant writing. That's going to be a lot of grant management. And that's a lot of projects that would not be happening for this community if staff wasn't looking at at doing that. And so that's just amazing. The breakdown of that, I think, is really reflective of the priorities that council has set. The biggest chunk of grants that we've received is over, it's about eight and a half million. That's about forty-four percent of the the chunk, and that's towards housing. So I think from the completion of that housing plan, realizing the crisis that we're in and trying to say we need to do everything we can to play a role, we're not a housing developer, but we need to play a role, is indicative of of staff really hearing that and and running with it and having the great partners in our community with projects that make it competitive. The next biggest chunk at twenty-eight percent is parks and recreation and library. So that's about five point four million dollars. Obviously, we've got that unicorn bridge in there, but there's a lot more than just that bridge in there. And that's a lot of work and it's a lot of moving this community forward and our recreation and leisure activities and quality of life. The next largest item is downtown at two point six million. Now, I have to say, the Walsh Building is part of that. So I didn't know if I should put that in downtown, public safety, infrastructure. It's it's kind of its own little thing. But the patience and and working with the EPA and everyone else in order to get that taken down for about one point three million is a really big deal. The next category at six percent or six point seven is infrastructure. So that's a lot of our public works, lift stations, our our mains and and streets and all of those types of things, really trying to be aggressive in getting the infrastructure because the stuff wears down and needs to be replaced. And so that's another big chunk. And then kind of on the smaller end is is we do have in in fifth place, public safety at one point two million dollars, so about six percent of that pie. And then next we have homeless at one hundred and fifteen thousand, so that's a point six percent. And then at point one is miscellaneous, historic, IT, those types of things. But that's over nineteen million dollars in in one year to to put forward some of these projects. The other item we wanted to share is on your next agenda is going to be determining who your mayor pro tem is. And so I know sometimes council likes to talk and think about who's interested and all of that kind of stuff. So we wanted to make sure you guys had enough time. So your first meeting in January, you will be selecting the mayor pro tem. So this is your heads up as it relates to that. Holly's also been, her and I have been working hard on trying to get the twenty-two, twenty-four calendar set up. And so those big meetings that are probably the most critical for council, which is the direct report evaluation, as well as the budget work sessions. She's been getting those sent out. We've been coordinating with Kim and trying to make sure we're we're getting everything lined up as it relates to those meetings. So you've been probably getting a lot of invitations for twenty-two, twenty-four, going all the way through the the year type of thing. The last item I want to say, and then Eric had just an update on the Princess Anne, is we were a little nervous with our insurance renewal this year. We had had some claims, we we had some lawsuits. We also had, from a state perspective, changes in the state law as it pertains to law enforcement and really changes the liability. So we weren't sure if we were going to, our current carrier wasn't going to carry us and and we weren't getting quotes from others. But we did look into SERSA, which I know if you go to CML, you see a lot about SERSA. It's a pretty extensive process to apply, requires a lot of work. But Jolene went through that and got help from some of the other department heads to pull the information together. They are going to cover us and it's actually going to be less than what if we would have renewed, had an option to renew type of situation. So we're really excited that there is an option like SERSA. What we were hearing a lot from our carriers is they're just not going to be carrying police because of those things in the state law. And so I'm hoping that information is getting to our representatives to understand kind of the implications they're having for agencies that have police departments and and how that impacts us. And then the last item is Eric on Princess Anne.
Council, this to some extent recapitulates an email that I sent you back on December seventh. But Princess Anne Place has had a successful resolution. It took us a little bit to get there, but in in terms of how quickly insurance companies move, I think we've got we've got some pretty quick movement out of the insurance company. They are working with all three of those homeowners. The the homes have been stabilized and there are bids and process coming in now to do the reconstruction. As you will recall, the there was water damaged asbestos tiling that had to be removed and asbestos-containing sheet rock that had to be removed. And now that all has to be put back and repaired. Insurance is covering that. One of the things that they pointed out that staff will be following up on is that even if the check valve, which the city has put in, really the responsibility of the owners to do that, but the city put them in there, even if that had been in place, it's quite possible that this backup would have happened. It's just the design of the very low gradient service line as it heads to the main will leave the possibility for backup. And we have both these houses on Princess Anne Place, but we have another a number of other places in the city that have similar low gradient service line situations. And the city will be notifying those owners that it would behoove them to put in check valves and that even so that they they run the risk of of some kind of backup. And we will record that in the real property records so that that notice will run with those properties so that so that owners are aware that they they need to do something with their sewers.
What's that timeframe that you guys are going to go back and look at? Like, when were those developments put in?
It's more a function of are they a similar kind of split-level development where the lower floor drains are really low? So there's not enough fall. There's a number of those, not a very large number, but a number of those around. And I don't, Harry might know. My suspicion is they probably are mostly ones that were put in in the early sixties, like the Princess Anne Place was.
So it's like the tri- those tri-level type homes with the base.
Split levels, uh-huh.
Thank you.
Mayor, I have a question.
Sure, go ahead.
So just, and you know, kudos to the city for being as proactive as you could with your hands tied on the insurance stuff for a little bit. There's a fourth house that was not affected on Princess Anne because of the way it sits or it was last in line or first in line for whatever reason. Has the city reached out to them to encourage them to take precautions as well?
Well, that they'll be part of the the broader reach out that we're doing. I'm pretty sure that the city, here comes Harry. I was going to say I'm pretty sure the city installed a check valve, but we'll let Harry talk to that.
And 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 that was that was part of my question because there was there was talk of that we we helped out the the houses that did flood with check valves, but the fourth house that was lucky enough not to be hit this time, did, were we proactive on that? Or did we just give them education?
So the reason the fourth house didn't flood is they had their clean-out cap removed. So it actually came out in their clean-out outside the house. So that was the kind of the pressure relief valve for for that house. But we did install a a backflow check valve on their house as well. So all three, all four houses have been updated as best as we can, so to hopefully prevent it.
Thank you very much.
Okay, a any other comments? Nope, anything else, Mr. Suez? Okay, thank you. That'll bring us down to council comments before we enter into an executive session. Any council comments? Councillor Krebs.
And seeing as this is the last meeting of the year, I just want to wish everybody out there and everybody here happy holidays. But and congratulations on all the hard work that this city has done. It's easy to look at some of the negative stuff, but if you look back over the entire year, your your team has done amazing things. And so congratulations and thank you for all your hard work. It's appreciated.
Thank you councillor Krebs, councillor V Hill, Jan V Hill.
Same thing, just a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everybody. Thanks for all you do and thank you to Eric and Heather and you guys for moving on this Princess Anne court stuff. Really appreciate that.
All right, I'll wrap things up. I want to thank you all for the nineteen, we got nineteen million reasons to thank you all for everything that you all did in twenty-two, twenty-three. Thanks to all of the departments, really appreciate that. The other thing I want to thank the team who put up the festive lights on San Juan. I'm looking forward to seeing that this Saturday, council at six o'clock, they're going to have a ribbon cutting. So I'm So I'm invite everyone to show up to that ribbon cutting if you could. And then I saw the firefighter of the year, Molly Heaney. I believe she was in the audience a little bit earlier. Chief, I just want to congratulate you and your team and her on being firefighter of the year as well. And then I think that's all I have right now. So Counselor V. Hill? We're going to go ahead and Merry Christmas to everyone and have a Happy New Year.
Mayor, I move that we go into executive session pursuant to CRS twenty-four, six, four, oh, two, four, F, to meet with the city manager to discuss management concerns raised by the police chief who resigned citing such concerns.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments? If not, please start voting. Ms. Martinez?
The motion carried unanimously.
So what we'll do, you all, I'll say, let's take a five-minute break, and we'll go in there at about, say, seven fifty-six, if that's okay. Give everybody a chance to go to the restroom. No further business will be discussed after we come out of executive session.